Approximately 6:30 PM. All members of council are here and present. At this time, I'd like to invite Jake Author to come on up. Jake is from Troop 617. He's come down to visit us this evening. Jake, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself, school, all that. Right in the mic.
Okay.
All right, a little bit about yourself.
I go to Hagerty High School. I'm in ninth grade, freshman. I've been scouting since I was like that tall, the tiger cub. Scouting goes from 11 years old, so I've been Boy Scouts since I was 11.
Great.
Um, I'm working on my Eagle Scout right now. I'm in, I'm in, going for my citizenship in the community mayor badge.
Congratulations.
Mayor badge, that's awesome.
Should be pretty close to Eagle Scout with that many mayor badges.
It's been out there.
Yeah, I'm one step away with life.
Well, good for you, and thank you for coming down with us. All standard lives for the pledge, please. And then Jake, I'll turn it over to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jake, thank you very much. Thank you.
And this evening, I'd like to ask Fire Chief White. Chief, can you do the invitation for us? Now, Brian, if you're keeping score, that means next meeting is yours, so. Thank you, Chief.
No problem. Good evening. We could go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we come to you tonight, and we have so many thanks, so many blessings you've bestowed upon this community. We pray for continued economic growth and stability, pray for the leaders of our country, our military, pray for our president, pray for the elections, pray and give thanks that we are Americans. Lord, we pray for our local elected leaders and the meetings that they participate in and all the activities they are engaged in. Lord, we also pray for our local family, the family of Caitlin Downing, and we pray for comfort for that family and perhaps a miracle could be seen here. We pray for our public safety, that they would go home tomorrow morning at the conclusion of their shift. We pray this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. What Chief mentioned about Caitlin Dowling, a young lady here in the community who has an inoperable cancerous brain tumor, back on her brain stem, and there was a pancake breakfast yesterday over at TJ's as a fundraiser for her, and I went out in the morning, and I gotta tell you folks, it just makes you prado and prado of our community. I mean, there were hundreds and hundreds of people out there yesterday. Chief, both chiefs were there. Chief White was making pancakes, and Chief Chubb now was serving pancakes, so the fire truck was out there, and it was quite an event, so we thank everybody who were involved in Moving along, our first item of business is a presentation on Rethink. Rethink is a commuter program, and we have with us tonight, I believe it is Courtney Miller. Courtney. Microphone is yours.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us out here. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Courtney Miller, and I am the program manager for the Florida Department of Transportation's District Five Regional Commuter Assistance Program, which he realizes is a mouthful, and part of the reason why we call it simply Rethink.
I think it's just I have to name it that way.
Name it that way? What we do at Rethink is ask people to rethink how they get to work. So what we do is simple things like carpooling, vanpooling, riding the bus, biking, walking, telecommuting, really options to people driving alone to work. We work with employers and with commuters to figure out how, what are the tools? And the reason why we promote transportation options, four big goals we have: decrease traffic congestion, improve air quality, conserve natural resources, but honestly, the fourth one is the one people get the most excited about, which is save people money. We talk to employers and commuters in nine counties, so not just here in Seminole County. We go as far north as Marion, Flagler, Volusia, Bernard, Orange, Osceola, Seminole, Lake, and Sumter. So really, wherever people are living or working in this area, we're available to help them out. But I actually want to concentrate on the top three things that you can do to help your employees and your residents. Number one, commuter tax benefits. This is really a secret almost, so people just not realizing that this is available in Section 132F of your IRS tax code. I know everybody reads it front to back like I do.
Jerry.
Yeah? We'll get together, we'll do lunch. So number one about commuter tax benefits, you can actually allow your employees to set aside up to $125 of their own money pre-tax to pay for a transit pass or a vanpool. Very similar in nature to a flexible spending account for health expenses at Section 125 or a little bit further down, 132F. But employers could also pitch in up to $125, and the employer actually gets a dollar-for-dollar tax deduction for every dollar they put into that. Again, that's transit, that's vanpool, and that also covers like an employee shuttle, if you were to shuttle them from one location, like perhaps a Sun Rail station, to work. Can you advance two more slides? So really, the way here for commuter tax benefits is a great way to support those transportation investments that are already being lined up to be made. It is a great way to demonstrate best practices for private businesses, because the private businesses stand to save even more money at tax time. You can attract and retain quality employees, find the generation one, the millennials, they want to live in communities where they can use transit to get to and from work, and this is a way to make it possible for them. And also, low cost and no cost, depending on how you offer this benefit. So commuter tax benefits is number one. The second one is park and ride lots. Park and ride lot is kind of a no-brainer. The Florida Department of Transportation, we actually have 14 throughout nine counties, and this is just a location where commuters can meet up, park their personal vehicles, and then transfer to a carpool or a vanpool to finish their trip. I love these park and ride lots because you don't have to worry about being towed. Sometimes you'll see people parking in a Lowe's or Walmart, but if there's not an agreement, you don't always know if you come back from where your car's gonna be there. What we try to do is work with private property owners, cities, counties, with existing parking lots that are probably not full every day of the year, and if we can stripe off a certain area, just put up some very cheap signs and say, "This is an area you can use the park and ride lot." What a great way to expand and create an amenity for your residents. And that picture there is actually in Deltona. See, Deltona helped us work with the private property owner of Deltona Plaza and put in those 13 spaces there. All right, number three, zip code analysis. This is actually one of the primary first steps we do when we work with employers, is just to find out where are your employees coming from? Are they a mile away from work? Are they 20 miles away from work? And by looking at that, that's how we figure out what makes the most sense to talk to people about. We're not gonna try to get people on the bus if it's gonna take them so long that it's just not viable. But if we see people coming from 20 miles away, can we make some carpools, save people some money, and get some cars off the road and help everybody? So those are the top three things. Number one, commuter tax benefits. Number two, park and ride lots. Number three, that simple zip code analysis. Now, I say simple, but I know it sounds like a lot. My message I want to leave with you all today and everybody here is that we're here to help. This program is about providing this resource to local residents, local business owners, and municipalities, and see how we can help you just tap into this existing resource that's here at no cost. So any questions you may have, I'm happy to entertain them, and also my contact information is in the package.
Well, thank you, Courtney. Let me see, does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes, councilman.
I've got two questions. The commuter tax benefit, is it also available for students who meet and ride together to school?
It has to be offered through your employer. So usually with students, if they were all working, like perhaps employed by, say, Seminole State College at the Oviedo campus, either maybe at the bookstore or something like there, then that would extend to them. And we are working with Seminole State College, trying to see what we can do to roll out to give this as an option for everybody.
And the second is, do you have a website that people can go to to look to find others who go in their direction?
Absolutely. That's our primary service that we have for commuters, and it's www.rethinkyourcommute.com. And that homepage, you're gonna see a blue button on the right that says, "Find Me a Match." You click on that, leave your match there, it comes up with some, just lets you know how it works, and sign me up. Same thing as if you have a Facebook account or an Amazon account, you create a username and a password, let us know where you're coming from, what your schedule is, and where you're heading, and then it'll generate a list of potential matches. It'll list names and any contact info, not personal info, so likewise, your home address won't show up. But what we're trying to do is get people talking. A lot of times, people just don't realize they have a neighbor who is in the cubicle across the way, and we want to be that starting point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, that this was presented to us by Ms. Miller to the county last month, and Commissioner DeLaurie on the county commission very much endorses it, and we believe it's a very integral component to the Sun Rail to provide connections to the commuter rail and the Sun Rail when it comes online.
Does make sense. Anything else? Well, thank you so much for coming down this evening. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, it was a proclamation for National Fire Prevention Week, and I turned it over to Councilman Schenck to read for us. Councilman Schenck?
Whereas the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department strives to educate our citizens to practice fire safety in the home by providing fire and life safety education utilizing a fire safety demonstration trailer, fire station tours, home fire safety inspections, and whereas across the nation, residential fires account for the greatest fire deaths and fire death, which result in 2,640 civilian fire deaths and 13,000 civilian fire injuries annually. And whereas the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department will participate in this year's National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week, promoting this year's theme, "Have Two Ways Out." And whereas we encourage our residents to practice basic home fire safety by creating and practicing a home fire escape plan, maintaining smoke detectors on each floor of the home, maintaining fire extinguishers in the kitchen and garage, and inspecting your home once a year for fire hazards. Now therefore, the mayor, Dominic Prisampiere, do proclaim October 7th through October 13th, 2012, as National Fire Prevention Week in the City of Oviedo, Florida.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Schenck. Chief, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, thank you. You got it.
All right, you're great. Since having a fire in my car one time, I'm not my engine, you know, having an extinguisher in the car isn't a bad idea too, so. So if you're gonna add another one on, add a little extinguisher in your car. Great. Thank you. Anybody have anything? Thank you, Chief. And the Councilman Schenck, thank you for reading that. Next item on the agenda is, I'm going to call up Ms. Becky Owen, and Ms. Owen is here to speak on the SARS tax referendum that will be on the ballot.
Property tax.
Property tax, mileage increase that is being proposed. I did, but that's okay. On the ballot in November, at the school board is asking us for, we have Stan Van Gundy down at our last meeting, and to be fair and balanced, Ms. Owen asks if she can come this evening and spend five minutes with us? Ms. Owen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. And yes, I'm not the local celebrity you had last week, but I am a parent of Seminole County students, a homeowner, a business owner, and investment property owner in Seminole County. And no doubt, we have wonderful schools in Seminole County. We are blessed with great demographics and high-achieving students that we send there. But I want to talk to you about two things tonight, the credit board that you have our school board, and the economy and misleading data that you may have seen out there. The ballot language and the ballot title, nowhere on there will you see the word "tax." They don't tell you that it's a tax, but trust me, in fact, it is, and mileage is a tax. They don't tell you exactly how much your tax rate will be, nor will they tell you exactly what they will spend this money on. A quarter mil was levied without order approval for two years, and we survived. And quite frankly, if that's all I wanted, was a quarter mil, I probably wouldn't be here, and I'd be home helping my daughter with homework tonight. But because my morals too much in this economy, I'm spending all my time and energy to work to defeat it. Not only were the school boards sent our whole community into a tailspin when they talked about closing schools, shortly after they decided not to close our schools, they found $3 million to pass out in unbudgeted, unbudgeted $3 million in bonuses. Shortly after that, they found another $5 million. There's no guarantee that if this tax were passed, schools will not close. We are, our enrollment is at a seven-year low, and we have, our elementary schools are, have a lot of empty seats. They probably need to do a little rezoning. I know people don't like to think that, but that's what we're facing today. There's no guarantee they won't close schools, and in fact, the school closure committee is still an active committee. Two of the five school board members said no. They don't think that passing a tax right now is a good idea, including the most senior member of the school board, Diane Bauer, who attended her first school board meeting back in the 70s. She has the most experience with our school budgets in both good times and bad, and she said this is not the time to raise taxes. And also guaranteeing us that they will not lower our academic standards or drop them with the AAA experience, so those threats of closing our, limiting our arts and music and athletics programs is just not true. They stated this, it's on the record in our school board meeting, when several high school students came to the board meeting in fear of these programs closing, and the school board assured them that would not happen. Onto the economy, we're after a wave of less today, and Seminole County families are earning 10% less than they did from 2007. All the way, we're paying more for food and gas and milk. What are we going to cut from our budgets to pay for this tax? The pro-tax side is claiming that they have lost $73 million in funding over the last five years. That comes out to approximately $4 million a year, or 2.6% of their entire budget. I don't think that's a crisis. We're already paying 7.55 mils to the schools. If you add one more mil onto that, that's a 13% increase, so a 2.6% reduction in funding, yet they want a 13% increase in revenue. You might also see a 30 cents per day claim. That is not accurate either, that's a bait and switch. The average home value, according to our property appraiser, David Johnson, is $150,702. After you take away the homestead of $25,000, you're left with $125,700. They're calculating it based on $105,000. They're running an emotional campaign, and we're running a campaign based on facts. There's numerous studies have been done that more money does not equal better education. Just look at Washington DC, Chicago, and you don't even have to look that far. In fact, Orange County has the property tax, the SARS tax, they spend more per student, their property values still have not increased, and their schools don't measure up to Seminole County. Out of the top 10 districts in Florida, only one of those districts, Monroe County, levies the one mil. I would love to see my money go to our teachers and classrooms. But the fact is that this money is going to go to increasing the already bloated bureaucracy of the administrators and construction companies and insurance companies that are financing the campaign. If you look at the papers filed with the supervisor of election, their PAC is set up at Warren Smith. Their phone number is Warren Smith. If there's any doubt about the administration growing, August, in August, we had 25 non-instructional administrators making over $100,000 a year, not including benefits, and today we have 26. It's growing. Enrollment at a seven-year low, why do we need more money to educate fewer students? This is not about a varsity football coach, it's about increasing the union and the bureaucracy and administration. It's a new tax we can't afford, and we cannot tax our way to prosperity. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Just for the record, to be fair and balanced, they're asking for up to one mil.
Yes, they're asking for up to one mil in this.
Up to one mil.
Up to one mil. They want it flexibility, but according to Florida statute, they're supposed to specify a range, a specific amount, not a range.
That's up to the courts.
Right.
I just want to keep it fair and balanced.
Yes, absolutely. And our PAC.
What is the name of your organization?
The name of our organization is called Citizens for Accountable Schools, and we can be reached at our website, noseminotaxhike.com, and we have your signs in case anyone's interested.
Great. Thank you so much. All righty, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for our meeting of September 17th, 2012. I'd like to entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor? Councilman? Motion approved. Second? We have a motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion? Nope, looks good. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our public comment. Now, I noticed some folks who had come in just a few minutes after we had started. Folks, if you have request-to-speak forms on the resolution that is coming up later, which is item number 18, you can just fill those out and hand them in to the clerk on the end. We'll be calling those up during that item. Is there anybody else in the audience, though, who would like to address council on any other item that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting, and we are going to move on to the consent agenda. What is the clusion of council? Mr. Mayor? Councilman Hackett? Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hackett? Looks good. Councilwoman?
It's good.
Councilman Schenck?
Good.
All looks good. All in favor of the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number 14, which is our public hearing portion of our meeting. We have no items on the agenda this evening, so we're gonna move on to item number 15, 16, and 17. Those are first reading of ordinances. We'll start with item number 15, ordinance number 1542, update to the comprehensive planned five-year capital improvement schedule. Mrs. Brazil, I'll turn it over to you for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The adoption of ordinance number 1542 will fulfill the requirements of Section 163.31773B of the Florida statutes. Adoption of this ordinance requires one reading and one public hearing before city council. This is the first reading of ordinance 1542. The DRC and the PZA have both reviewed and approved this five-year capital improvement schedule. It is recommended that the city council read ordinance number 1542 by title only and schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to read ordinance number 1542 by title only.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mr. Grude?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the City of Oviedo competency plan, providing for severability, conflicts, ratification of acts, and an effective date. That's the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Grude. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 1542 for October 22nd, 2012, at approximately 6:30 PM here in the Oviedo City Council Chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman?
Nope.
Councilman?
No sir.
Down to my left. All those in favor of the motion, schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1542 on October 22nd at 6:30 PM, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving along, we're on to item number 16, ordinance number 1549, annexation. Ms. Brazil, I'll turn it over to you for a brief introduction.
Thank you. This is a request for council to adopt ordinance number 1549 that approves an annexation petition for approximately 9.79 acres located on the west and the south side of State Road 434. The applicant is Dwight Saifoff of American Land Investors of Central Florida. The applicant seeks to annex the subject property into the City of Oviedo and plans to develop the property as a single-family residential subdivision. It is recommended that council read ordinance 1549 by title only and schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to read ordinance number 1549 by title only.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mr. Grude?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition, certain real property approximately 9.79 acres in size and generally located on the west and south side of State Road 434, and located contiguous to the City of Oviedo in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes. Redefining the boundaries of the City of Oviedo to include said property, providing for findings, providing for conditions, directing the city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of the circuit court, with the chief administrative office of Seminole County, and with the Department of State, providing for legal description and map, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for non-cogification, and the taking of administrative actions, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grude. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on October 22nd, 2012, on ordinance number 1549 here in the Oviedo City Council Chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No sir.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on, item number 17, it is ordinance number 1552, enforcement of city codes and ordinances. Ms. Brazil?
Thank you. This is an action to adopt ordinance 1552 to amend the code of ordinances relating to the enforcement of city codes, ordinances, and other regulations. You'll recall at our workshop on June 11th, where our staff presented recommended changes and additions to the city's overall enforcement practices, and that workshop recommended changes and additions, including having all violations of city codes and ordinances be heard by a special magistrate, implementing administrative citation processes under the Home Rule Powers of the city, and updating sections of the city's current codes and ordinances to reflect new fine amounts for all citations. City council directed staff to move forward with these recommendations, changes, and additions. So it is recommended that you read ordinance number 1552 by title only and schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to read ordinance number 1552 by title only.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mr. Grude?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, relating to the enforcement of city codes and ordinances under the provisions of Chapter 162 Florida statutes and under the constitutional and statutory Home Rule Powers of the city, providing for legislative findings and intent substantially rewarding Sections 2-87 and 2-88, and repealing Section 2-89 of the city code. Providing for citation, providing for citation processes and procedures, providing for appeals, providing for hearing officers, providing for penalties and remedies, providing for implementing actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Grude. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule ordinance number 1552 for a public hearing on October 22nd, 2012, at approximately 6:30 PM here in the Oviedo City Council Chambers at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we're up to item number 18, Resolution Number 2571-12, pre-development order for Dollar General. Before we begin this item, I would just like to make a few announcements. First announcement is, anybody who wants to speak, have you handed in a form? You will not be called if you have not. Second issue, all items that pertain to this will be directed at the item itself and the item in general, not at the council, not directly to us personally, but just on the item. We need to stay focused on the issue, we need to not be redundant on the issue. So as I call you out, whether you're for or against, you will have three minutes to make a brief presentation to the council. We will try to stay on point as best we can. I also have to stand that the attorneys have an announcement to make that may change everything that I just said, but I wanted to just lay that out upfront before we all started. So at this time, I will call up resolution number twenty-five seventy-one dash twelve, predevelopment order for Dollar General, and turn it over to our city manager for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a request to adopt resolution twenty-five seventy-one dash twelve, approving a predevelopment order relating to right-of-way and easement conveyances associated with the Dollar General development. The applicant is RKM Development Corporation, and the representatives are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, even though this is not a quasi-judicial matter that is in front of us, we are going to run the hearing as it if won, as it, as if it was won, excuse me. For the record, I'd like to announce that I have spoken to both the developer and the homeowners association. They have asked to meet with us, and I have met with them both. I will let the other members of council disclose any meetings that they may have had. We'll start with Councilwoman.
I met a while ago with them, with the representative of the Dollar General, but I also met with the Biltmore Association.
Councilman Schenk?
I similarly met with both the developer and the homeowners association representatives.
Councilman Britt?
Same disclosure. I met with the developer and the HOA consecutive meetings.
And Councilman Hackett, you were alive.
I have not met with either side and just prefered to hear you all tonight as I first get it, so sometimes we do that, but this was my choice tonight to hear you all live in front of us, so we made that, that call, so.
Again, that was not necessary, but for full disclosure, we wanted to throw that out. There are many different opinions on this subject on either side. At this time, though, I'd like to turn it over to the developer's attorney, Cecilia Bonifay, to come on out. And is Brent going to join you, or are we going to have a joint announcement? How are you guys going to handle this?
I think we're going to start. I will make the announcement. I have conferred with Brent Spain, who is the attorney for the HOA, but I also wanted to make a few comments for the record, Mayor and members of the city council.
May I have ten minutes?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Cecilia Bonifay. Where's our little? Okay.
You can go ahead. We don't have that many.
For the record, my name is Cecilia Bonifay, and I'm an attorney with a consent benefit addressed four-twenty South Orange Avenue, Suite twelve-hundred, Orlando, Florida, and I am here tonight on behalf of RKM Development. With me tonight are Mr. Bill Lloyd, who is the principal with RKM, who has been involved with this project from the beginning, and also Tom Skelton, who is our engineer on the project and who's also been involved on this. As the mayor has indicated, we have been negotiating for a number of months now with the attorney for the HOA, Mr. Brent Spain, and we have today come to a final agreement and settlement on this matter and have concluded the outstanding issues. So there is a written settlement agreement that both parties have entered into, which has resolved those outstanding issues. And I know Mr. Spain can follow me and make any further comments that he wishes to, but in essence, this matter is resolved as it pertains to the Biltmore Town Home Association and RKM. I think it should be pointed out, however, that there seemed to have been perhaps some misunderstanding as to what items were actually coming before you tonight from some of the emails and letters and information that I have seen over the last several months. And tonight, we're here only for the city council to accept or approve a resolution dealing with the predevelopment order, and that is the provision by RKM to the city of certain documents and deeds. That would be right-of-way for a stormwater pond and a public access parking lot that we entered into mainly because Biltmore needed some additional parking, and it's up to the city as to how that is utilized, a drainage easement for stormwater maintenance access, a cross-access and utility easement, and then a maintenance agreement, which we also provided to Biltmore and Mr. Spain, which is how we're going to maintain those things in the future, because that is a responsibility of the developer. So all of those documents are the backup that's in your package. Going a step further, it was the, the worst concern on behalf of the city council in terms of exactly what conditions would be imposed upon this particular development, because under your process, we could have just proceeded with a site plan, a final site plan approval. Because we're making these dedications, the city did ask that there be certain conditions as a part of this predevelopment order that was drafted by your city attorney, Mr. Groot. So those are the conditions that will follow this project as it moves forward into final site plan review. And those requirements are listed in your staff report and for the members of the audience, and they really cover three different areas. One is that there must be two access points to this development. One is right-in, right-out from State Road four-twenty-six, which will require further applications by the developer, and we, in trying to meet that, Ms. Lloyd and Mr. Skelton have already received a development permit from the Florida Department of Transportation as this is, four-twenty-six is a state road. So that will be coming back to you when you look at this, because that is a deviation. Secondly, there will be the Chippendale Terrace access, which is a, a public road and a signalized intersection. And we will then access through the rear through a public right-of-way, again, which are part of these documents that are in your package, which is being deeded to the city. So you will have that land as part of your, under your control. Secondly, was an architectural plan that is the elevation that is included as part of your package. There is a colored rendering, which is in there, which is a partial brick facade, some color, and I think Mr. Lloyd also has demonstrative exhibits, if someone actually wanted to see what that looked like. I know we have provided those to certain members of the city council that we met with. So, and all of these, as I must remind you, stated in the predevelopment order must also meet all of the requirements of your land development code. So nothing goes forward unless it meets all of those requirements. The number C, or exhibit C, which actually is exhibit F, and your exhibit is a buffering, fencing, and landscaping plan, so that is also included. So there is significant buffering that is included in here. There's double-rope hedges to buffer the parking from Chippendale. There's also extensive buffering in the rear, and it's part of our settlement. Today, there is an additional vibranium hedge that will be provided along the rear up against the fence that is already there. And then the last requirement, or exhibit G, is again, the overall site plan that must be done in compliance with both the exhibit that is in your backup, as well as all the requirements of the land development code. So tonight, we're really not approving a site plan. What we're approving is a predevelopment order and the granting by the developer to the city of the public right-of-way, the retention and parking, the maintenance of those, a cross-access easement, and I would say that on the cross-access easement, too, that part of these negotiations on it was still all of Mr. Spain's thunder, but part of that is there was, our client had to acquire additional property to provide additional buffer, as included on your site plan, so there is now a, a much more extensive distance between the back of the actual Dollar General store and where the Chippendale Town Home Development is located. And as part of that, the right-of-way is located in there, but there was a remainder parcel that would have a zoning and multifamily. And Mr. Lloyd has agreed to deed that property to the HOA for their use and maintenance, however they see fit, and however that complies with whatever the city's land development code would be. So that is also a part of the settlement agreement that we've entered into. So we are here, Ms. Lloyd, Mr. Skelton, myself, to answer any questions that the council might have, or if you hear anything else during the course of this meeting, if you'd like to call us back to answer any questions, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Bonifay.
Thank you.
Mr. Spain?
Good evening, council members. My name is Brent Spain, the law firm Theriak in Spain, four-seven-six-seven New Broad Street, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-one-four. I apologize at the start. I've got a very raspy voice, courtesy of my two-year-old and three-year-old, who I put into preschool, and now they have paid me back dearly with sickness after sickness. But I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Obviously, going into today, this hearing was probably going to be slightly different. After several months of negotiating, the developer and the Biltmore Town Home Community Association, Inc., entered into a settlement agreement today at about four-forty. That settlement agreement, as Ms. Bonifay indicated, has a number of additional conditions that the HOA had been requesting for several months. The one condition that I just would impress upon the council, and I know that it's in your preliminary development order, and I'm a developer, and Ms. Bonifay is supportive of it, is the additional access onto Broadway, given that Chippendale is a local street. That's been a critical point all along, and the developer's been supportive of that aspect of the association's request, but is to get as much traffic as possible off of Chippendale and onto Broadway. With that said, and consistent with the terms of the settlement agreement, I don't have any formal opposition to the project. On behalf of the association, I know there are probably some individual residents here, but I thank you all for meeting with our representatives, I thank the developer and their council for negotiating at times very, you know.
Acrimonious?
At times, and both sides just trying to do their best for their respective clients, and I think we reached a happy medium. Not everybody's probably happy with the result, but that, that means everybody compromised.
Mr. Spain, have you supplied Mr. Groot with a copy of that agreement yet?
I haven't.
I realize it was late in the day.
Yeah, I haven't, but I'd be happy to email.
If you could just get one from Ms. Brazil and Mr. Groot and Mr. Cobb, so that way that we ensure that what you've agreed to becomes part, you know, we haven't missed anything on our side.
Certainly, Mayor, I'll email them later tonight.
Great, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Feel better.
Yeah.
All righty. Now we will move into the written requests to speak that I have. If your questions have been answered, you can just let me know, and I will move on to the next person. The first written request form I have is from Ms. Janice Boston. Ms. Boston, just name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes. It's all yours.
Okay. My name is Janice Davis-Boston. My address is twenty-ninth eighty-eight South West Bay Court, Oviedo, Florida, and I'm one of the listed owners of the property at ten-seventy-seven West Broadway. And I came to just share a little history about the property, but in light of what has just transpired, which I did not know about until, or got here, I will just delete some of the comments that I had to make. But anyway, I just wanted you to know that all of the property at ten-seventy-seven West Broadway, including the Biltmore property, was owned by my grandparents, my great-grandparents. My mother, who's here tonight, was eighty-five years old, played on that property. We played on it. Back in the day, people, children didn't play inside. We played outside. And so that was where our woods, that's what we played in, in that Biltmore property and the ten-seventy-seven property. The property is very sentimental to us. We would not consider selling it, but the property was changed to commercial. My mother, again, I said is eighty-five years old, cannot afford to continue paying the high rise in taxes, so we wanted to give her some of the benefits of the rewards of paying taxes over the years. So I'm, I'm glad that there has been a settlement, but I just wanted to say to you that we feel that this project will certainly enhance the view and the quality of this property, and not to mention that it will bring jobs to our community and the convenience of our city residents. I'm sure that those living in the median area will shop there as well. And this property is commercial, and we feel that it should be developed. This is, it's a beautiful piece of land, and as I said, it's very sentimental to us. My grandmother lived there. My mother grew up there. I, I can remember, I have very vivid memories of swinging on those trees and jumping, I don't know if people remember, jumping on springboards and things like that. And also, just a few years ago, four of our beautiful children, you know, expired on that land. So to sell it is touching to us, but as I said, we wanted to make sure that my mom can enjoy some of the years of her life and not have to just sit there and look at the sentiment of it and see how the beauty of it, because if we could, our children probably won't continue to pay the taxes. But those of us who have decided to do that, we wanted to make sure that she would do that. And the reason that I'm here is because my brothers, my cousins, and I stepped in to help her pay the taxes. So my statement to the council is, we hope that you will consider this and give them an opportunity to develop this property so that we can enjoy some of those benefits of years of paying high-rising taxes in Oviedo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Boston, I believe there's a memorial being placed on the property, too. I think there's a memorial being placed on the property.
Yes, they told me tonight, and I think that's very beautiful. We will all be so very happy, because if it, as I said, my mother's eighty-five, and we're getting up there, too, and these young kids are not going to develop it, and they're not going to keep it. So if we could, we would have developed it and kept something very beautiful, even a park, in memory of our grandparents and those children who passed on that property. And I thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Next written request that I received was from Cliff Knapp. So just name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Cliff Knapp. I live at fourteen Chippendale Terrace in the Biltmore community, and I thank you all for letting me speak to you tonight. With respect to Ms. Boston, I'm not here to deny sale of a property for what I believe would be a credible business. My dissatisfaction is with the business that you're considering bringing here, and I'll try to make this as short as possible. I moved into the community because of the property and the trees that are there that will all be destroyed shortly. I thought you were trying to build a more elevated community, and I don't see that happening with the business you're going to put there. You're talking about a cookie cutter cinder block building, nine thousand square feet, who has no concerns about the exterior or anything more than a parking lot. More importantly, I wanted to address the safety issues. We talk about our kids. We talk about people walking in and out, riding. It took me forty-five minutes on Saturday to go online and find over twenty-five pending items that have criminal activity with the DG environment. Probably the worst one was the recent Jacksonville situation where someone died. Of those pending items, thirteen are armed robberies with gun, knife, even one crowbar. Seven of those items are just pure robberies, and I don't know how they got in and got the money, put people into closets or whatever, but again, we're talking about outstanding criminal activity. Four were overnight thefts, which again concerns me about people that may venture into our community versus the store. So with that, I, I, I don't think, and I hope you don't want that kind of environment in our community. I don't believe, as some people seem to say, that this is the type of clientele that this business is going to target. In May of this year, Hoover's did a review of D and G, and I quote, one of their comments is, Dollar General typically targets low-income, low-middle-income, and fixed-income shoppers. I don't think in any of the communities within one and a half miles of our front door, and I quote those to be Whispering Oaks, Seneca Bend, Chestnut Estates, which were all on Winter Springs Boulevard, you've got Hickory Glen, Willow Lake, Oak Hollow, Willow Oaks, Bentley Woods, Worthingham Estates, all down Pine. If you come towards town, you've got Moss Creek, and then if you drive on Hillcrest Drive and High Street, you've got homes that are half a million dollars and more. They're not looking for discount retail operations. If they want it, there's a Dollar General in Castlebury. They found a way to put property in issues where they needed to fill buildings that were already standing there. They didn't have to rebuild something new, and that is my topic. So I apologize.
No problem.
You know, the folks who own the property, I'm not there for that. I just, I don't agree with the business you're trying to place there, and it doesn't go along with any of the businesses on the road.
Thank you.
As far as the law. As far as the...
Thank you. Just like the people, folks. That won't be tolerated. I thought I made that clear at the beginning. We, okay? We are going to address the issues. Next one I have is Carolyn Canada. And just, Ms. Canada, before you speak for the record, folks, you need to understand that we don't regulate the business that comes in. Retail is retail, according to the code, so... Ms. Canada?
Thank you. I appreciate being allowed to speak. I'm Carolyn Canada with Commercial Homes and Land. My office is located at 120 Alexandria Boulevard, Suite 12 in Oviedo, and I wanted to clarify that because in the very beginning, when we first started having problems as far as statements made by the Biltmore, they kept referring to Caldwell Banker, where I had the listing originally, and then it became listed with Commercial Homes and Land. And I kind of laughed, because one of the emails from the Biltmore to Mayor Per Santiere said, "Well, I guess we won't be getting any Christmas cards from Caldwell Banker." And I just wanted to clarify that it is not Caldwell Banker, it's Commercial Homes and Land. And one of the things that made me pleased to take the listing is that these people that own it are very fine people that have lived here a long time. I have the utmost respect for them and their family. I was terribly dismayed that it's taken about 18 months to go through all of this with approvals and hearings and going back and forth, and some statements are actually incorrect that were made by the gentleman who just spoke. For one thing, the building is beautiful. It's one of the nicest buildings to be built that I've seen with a Dollar General. And also, it is not low-income people specifically that go to a Dollar General. My husband and I own Children's Action Relief, a humanitarian aid group. We buy most of our toiletries from there. We can get brand-name items at a low cost, which we distribute in the community, as well as through C containers being shipped 45,000 pounds at a time to places like Haiti and El Salvador, and it's because of Dollar General that we can afford to do that. We can't pay, you know, full retail prices for things like that. And also, you occasionally get people going there to buy their school supplies, things like that, including our church goes to one of the Dollar General stores to get arts and crafts supplies for the kids' Sunday school. And I also wanted to mention that according to the C1 zoning with City of Oviedo, there's a lot worse that could be there than a Dollar General store, and people that live in the area need to realize that. It could be a whole lot worse. For one thing, you can have a repair shop, you can have a restaurant, I don't know how late the hours could be, or if they could have entertainment, but that could generate more traffic, safety issues, the smell of dumpsters, all of those things, even a kennel with dogs barking. So I think that this is actually a very good fit, and you'll find also that there are 30 more trees that are going to be on the property. I know Janice Boston liked all the trees that were on the property that she remembered playing on as a child. Well, now we'll have 30 more trees, and they've also assured me that the grand oaks are being preserved.
Ms. Canada, we need to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Next request to speak form that I have is from Mr. Zimmer, Donald Zimmer. Sir, I just need your name and address for the record, and then they'll start the shot.
My name is Donald Lawrence Zimmer. I live 130 Cambridge Drive in Longwood. I own 138 Chippendale. We're the second buyer in there. I'm here as a representative of personal property, but I'm also here as a real estate appraiser. And I don't know how many of you have experience in a real estate appraisal, but there are three different areas on the 10004 real estate form that we fill out and turn in that deal with commercial property. It's how close it is, where it is, what it is. And there's a reason for that. Commercial property located relevant to residential absolutely affects the value of that property. And there are reasons for that, not the least of which is traffic. There are other reasons. As she pointed out, it's going to be a beautiful building, Dollar General going in there, but what happens when Dollar General gets tired, or it doesn't work, or they move out? So there's no assurance that it won't turn into a gas station. Second thing is, there is, all the way from the get-go on this, there's been a world of opposition to this, not only from 95 to 100% of the Biltmore residents, but people who don't live in Biltmore and in that surrounding neighborhood that don't want it there. So I'm hoping that you'll keep some of this in mind. In passing, I understand that this is a 9,000-square-foot building, that the land is supposed to be supporting somewhere in the area of 7,000 square feet? Just asking a question. The last thing, you know, about 10 minutes ago, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, and it ends with justice for all. Well, justice for all to the people of Biltmore and the surrounding community, all of which don't want this located there, seems to me to not be justice for all. So I hope that you'll keep this in mind. That's what you were sworn to do when you were elected officials, and I hope you'll do that for the people of Biltmore and the surrounding community. Thank you.
The other request to speak forms that I have on the fore side are from the engineer and such. I'm going to hold these off, and I'll call everybody up later. Next one I have is from Mr. Kissinger. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Kissinger. I live at 1023 Willow Lake Circle, in the Willow Lake subdivision. I drive down Pine Avenue every day, and I come to the corner of 426...
Excuse me, Mr. Kissinger, can you just pull the mic down a little bit, so that folks can hear you?
I drive down Pine Avenue every morning, and I go on my way to work, and I come to the light at Chippendale and 426, and I, as I'm waiting at the red light, I see that beautiful lot across the street with those tremendous, beautiful live oaks. They look like they could be over 100 years old easily. And then, all of a sudden, I see this Dollar General sign draped over the subdivisions of the entranceway, and it was baffling to me. I went on Google, and I entered in Dollar General, just for the heck of it, one evening, and I pressed on the images. And believe me, I welcome everyone to do that, because you will find, in my opinion, there's nothing pretty and aesthetically appealing to a Dollar General store, nothing. Okay? I'm on the board of the Willow Lake HOA, and I feel that adding a business to this community is always welcome, but locating it at 426 in Chippendale is a bad idea and bad for the community. The location sits adjacent to Oviedo High School, where there is gated community of townhomes. The land is a vacant lot with many large live oak trees. Adding such a business that the property would not only increase traffic, but would be a huge eyesore. And I was also wondering, and this is a question, has there been any traffic impact study at that intersection? There are many vacant commercial properties that have stood empty for years due to the poor economy. Why can't they use Tuscan Olive Ben, for example? It's a strip mall, and there are some vacant commercial properties there. I don't know why Dollar General didn't consider using alternate means as opposed to building an entirely new store. If the business fails, you will have one empty shell of a store sitting on what used to be an attractive lot. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Before we continue, just for the record, I'd like everybody to realize that that lot is zoned commercial. The one to the north of it, just for the record, is also zoned commercial. So, you know, we could be back here years from now discussing the one right across from Oviedo High School. So everybody just needs to keep that in mind. Those are zoned commercial long before we rezoned for Biltmore, which I sat on this council when we did that years ago, and Biltmore was a rezoning. Nothing we're discussing tonight is, so... Next writ request I have is for Mr. Michael Varley. Sir, name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Varley. I live at 12738 South Lake Sawyer Lane, Windermere, Florida. I am a lifelong resident of Oviedo. I graduated from Oviedo High School. I went to school with the box, and probably there needs to be nephew or brother.
Oh, that's definitely true, though. It would take us a long time.
I just want to send my condolences. So in lieu of some of the agreements offered today, this is going to be very short. First off, I just want to say that I strongly oppose the Dollar General development at the corner of our subdivision. Most of my concerns are with traffic, of which one of the, we're addressed today, which was the entrance, the right and right out of. My other concern that I would like to address more than anything is crime. I feel that by having the store there, it just creates a buffer for crime within our own subdivision. It's an easy way for people to access our subdivision, which is gated by simply parking their car and jumping over the fence. I also have a concern as far as commercial vehicles. As we all know, commercial vehicles and logistics are built on tight timeframes on when they need to deliver, to get to and from, they're distribution centers throughout the state of Florida. With that being said, trucks coming in and out, in their term, it's going to be their right-of-way at all time. We have a lot of kids that are within the community at Chippendale, and, you know, I've almost seen them hit before on that corner without a commercial, without commercial vehicles coming and going. I don't know if the other address was the emergency turn, as far as the size of the emergency vehicles being able to get in.
That's been addressed.
Has it been addressed? Okay, I'm sorry.
Gotcha.
So in closing, I ask you as representatives of our community to do what's right for the people. I'm leaving it in your hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Spain, do you have anything you'd like to add? Not for now, okay? Ms. Bonifay or Mr. Lloyd? Mr. Skellton? Ms. Bonifay, I do have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
I know there was some talk about hours for delivery and things going on. Can you expand on that? Can you give it for me, please?
Yes. As part of the settlement agreement that we reached with Biltmore Town Home Community Association, that was one of the early things that we did agree upon, and that was very specifically, let me come to that particular item. They had requested a limitation of store hours of operation from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. We had agreed with that, that we would prohibit overnight parking. We agreed with that. Also, that they were concerned about refrigerated trucks, because they make a noise, that no refrigerated trucks would remain overnight. We can't stop them as they come through. You can't make them turn off their refrigeration, because of course everything would spoil, but that none of them can remain overnight, that loading is anticipated to occur through the front and the rear of the store. However, large delivery trucks are only anticipated to use the rear loading area once per week, and that we would limit the hours of truck delivery, and no deliveries will take place between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So the store hours, it's not 24/7, as many of these people have indicated, it's from 8:00 to 9:00, and there will be absolutely no deliveries between 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., no overnight parking. So I think those are several of the issues that were brought up, and there are also others, I think, that are part of this settlement agreement that has been entered into specifically with regard to the live oaks, that the HOA was very concerned with big live oaks, that those be preserved, and that is a requirement. And also, in the parking spaces that were created, the 10 parking spaces that are not parking for Dollar General employees, they're not counted as their parking, those are for the public, and we had supported the HOA if they want to come back to the city and ask that those be available through some form, that the city would allow those to be for Biltmore. And we also, that is part of our maintenance agreement with the city, so the retention, the right-of-way, and those parking will be maintained in conformance with the maintenance agreement that is part of your agenda backup tonight. So those are some, I think, of the other issues that, and we also agreed to prohibit 15 uses that were available to this site that could not be by a deed restriction, so those cannot be done in the future. So if, in fact, it's not a Dollar General in the future, the 15 that we've entered into in the settlement agreement would be prohibited, and I also...
So that's going to run with the deed of the land?
Yes, that is in the settlement agreement that Mr. Spain sent me the denim this afternoon. There's a timing and a mechanism for that deed restriction to be entered into, also the deed to the HOA for that remainder parcel that was the multifamily, so that will go to the benefit entirely of the HOA.
Ms. Bonifay, what is the timeframe for the deed restriction that you made with the HOA? You said there was a little time. Is it going to be, is the deed restriction in these 15 prohibited businesses going to be done as this gets signed right away, or what is that timeframe?
And I, let me look at the denim and Mr. Spain, I know since he drafted it...
Mr. Spain, do you want to answer that? You can show it, everyone just come on.
I forget the timing we agreed on on that one, but we, I think it was at the end of the development order.
Mr. Spain, can you answer the councilman's question, please?
For the record, the trigger is 30 days after the final site plan approval, and any appeal period's running, so essentially 30 days once the approval becomes final.
And they're going to run with the land for, in perpetuity, forever?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say, too, that the elevation, I think a statement was made that this was a cinder block building, and again, I don't know if everybody's looked at your agenda package, but there is a color rendering of the elevations of the store.
And Ms. Bonifay, for the record, while we're on that, you all agree that that is the minimum elevation that will be provided?
Yes.
Because there still may be codes that...
Yes, absolutely.
...where there might have to be a little bit of stuff still added to it, but that's the minimum.
Right, and I think that's the way your pre-development order reads.
I believe it is as well. Mr. May?
Sure. Quick, Ms. Bonifay, I'm sure some of the members of the audience, and if you don't have them all, but some of the businesses that you've prohibited by this deed restriction, can you share those with us? So, you know, some of the big ones, are we talking gas stations, tattoo parlors?
That is not...
pawn shops, things like that? What type of, what type of prohibited businesses are in those?
The 15 uses that would be prohibited are any adult uses, gold pawn stores, packaged liquor stores, head smoke shops, hookah lounges, dry cleaner with onsite treatment, clubs, social halls, internet cafes, gun shops, video game or entertainment arcades, payday loan, and check cashing, self-service laundry, communication towers, billboards, bars and lounges, and any building taller than 35 feet. And any of the others that I think was brought out, that of the few that were left, those may not be allowed per your code, because you have certain designated intersections or things like convenience stores. This does not meet that criteria, so that would not be allowed per code.
Ms. Bonifay, lighting, let's talk about outdoor lighting. Is the developer going to be meeting the... Is the developer going to be meeting the new dark night sky lighting standards?
Yes, and again, that was an early issue.
Now, dark night sky is a specific code.
Yes, and in terms of what we are doing, and Mr. Lloyd, I think, is very familiar with this and does this in many of his other locations, his all lights are shielded, directed down, and is, he knows how many candle feet that is and what would be required to meet that. So, again, not only do we enter into a commitment with the HOA as to how we would handle the lighting, that there's no amplification off-site, there would be nothing of that type that would be allowed, but also we have to meet your dark sky and your specific code requirement.
Well, I'm asking for an additional dark night sky code.
And...
That is what, that is what all the developers are starting to follow in that area.
Right.
That is what Ray Strack is putting in. It's made LED type lighting, so it's all straight down and matte out.
Shielded.
And not those yellow sodium bulbs.
No, and everything goes directly on the site. Nothing spills over into the adjoining landies, and we knew that that was a very big concern of the HOA.
Mr. Cobb, can we just get dark night sky added to that agreement? Dark night sky standards for lighting added to the agreement?
Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is that if the city council wants to add that to your pre-development order, then I would include that as part of your motion.
Okay.
That as, as an addition to the conditions that the developer will comply with the dark sky, dark night sky.
Can you stand or shout? Can you take a minute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Left-hand lane at Chippendale.
Yes.
I've had a discussion with Biltmore and Mr. Lloyd about exploring the possibility of adding a left-hand turn lane on Chippendale with a signal in order to make the movement out of Chippendale that much easier, because that's one of the problems that they're experiencing in the morning right now, the way the light is set up. There is no left turn signal. Now, I realize that that's going to be very difficult to commit to doing this evening, but what I am asking is that we will commit to a study of it to see if there is the available right of way, which may require Biltmore giving up some right of way upfront in order to make that happen.
And I think we were, I'm looking at Mr. Lloyd, of course, since he has to undertake that study and Mr. Skelton, but again, I think we can look at the feasibility and how that could happen within the existing right of way. But you are correct, Mayor, that the way that the right of way was set up, actually the HOA has some additional right of way that's not connected essentially with their development. So, we can look at that, and to a prior question, yes, the traffic analysis and traffic study was done for your code.
I did see that. Did you get that down there, Mr. Schenk?
Which one was that?
Left-hand turn lane.
Left-hand turn lane, yeah.
Study offer of Chippendale. That is all I have for you at this moment. Does anybody else on the body have anything from Ms. Bonifay? Good?
Just the, also, because you got it in that, I burn them hedges.
Yes.
We'll just throw some wording.
Well, what we would like to do is that is part of this settlement agreement, which is with the HOA, which is in fact a contract that we will have with them, which they have certain enforceability. So, if we don't comply, but we will change, as this goes back through to your staff, the landscape plan will be modified to include that.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you, Ms. Bonifay. Anything, have anything for Mr. Spain?
Did you want to put up the...
I would like to entertain a motion on ordinance number, resolution number 2571-12, please.
So moved. I said I need to entertain a motion. So moved. Make a motion to adopt the resolution 2571-12.
You have motions or a second?
A second for discussion purposes.
We have a motion for discussion, even though that doesn't really exist, but we have a motion I'm able to adopt. Councilman Henkin, do you have anything?
Yes, I have a couple of points. Folks, obviously, this has been a very emotional time for you all, and the council just indulged me for a few minutes. I may need more than three minutes, but I want to, I want to just tell you all a little story to try to put your, your minds at ease when you go to sleep tonight. I'm sitting up here for seven years, and what got me into this is exactly what you are all facing right now. I live out on the east side of Oviedo off of 419. Many of you have driven out there years ago. It used to be very rural, dealers all over the place, although they're still there. You got to dodge them every so often. But where I live, we have this beautiful lot about, I would say 10 times the size of the lot you have out in front of Biltmore.
That's about five acres.
Probably five, six acres. And for years that I lived there, we kept hearing that it was going to be developed into a gas station. Well, Henkin didn't like a gas station with 782 homes there and more subdivisions coming and two schools there. So, for four years before I got on this council, I fought with this developer, just myself and maybe a couple of people in my HOA, and we just did not want this. We had all the concerns that you folks had with the crime, with the traffic, all these, these nasty things, after-hours things. So, to make a long story short, our HOA did pretty much what Ms. Bonifay and your HOA have come to agreement. They put these deed restrictions on this property so we could never have a gas station. But what we wound up with, if you ride out to 419 in between the two Twin Rivers boulevards, you have this, I would say it's a pretty sprawling commercial property with a bunch of stores in it. There's a convenience store there, there's a pizza place, there's all kinds of stuff. We even at one time had a gun store there, which really didn't go over big with two schools, but in and they were fine. So, the point I'm trying to make, whether this passes or not, you know, I disagree. One of the, one of the residents came up and talked about how commercial can make your, your neighborhood go down. That is, that is the case if you have something very bad. But if you go out there, I have absolutely no issue with this complex they built there because we've had no crime, you know, little riffraffy things, maybe fences being down, but we've had no armed robberies, we've had no, no issues, and there's two schools there, an elementary school's right across the street. The traffic really is not a big, big issue, and if it's managed right, it's fine. So, our HOA wound up having to pay an enormous amount of fines to the developer to redo it to what it is today, and it's fine. And I live two blocks from it. I hear no noise. The only thing I get is an occasional, when the wind blows, I get to smell that nice pizza sauce from the pizza place, and that's not too bad if that's the worst, but it's better than gas fumes, which we would have. And you can ask anybody on this body, I fought this thing to death, but now that it's here and it's what we made it, it's much better. And a couple of points that I just want to, want to talk about. Somebody, I think it was Ms. Bonifay brought it up, and I think the gentleman from Longwood brought up, if, if somebody came in and wanted to build a 7,000 square foot facility there, they don't even need to come to us. So, you could get some nasty business there that you really would not like. Also, should this body turn this down, in all my experience, we'll probably get sued, we'll lose, and it'll cost us all an enormous amount of money to do it. So, what we're trying to do tonight, and I think your HOA made this agreement today, they feel it's a, it's a decent thing, is to get this as best we can and the less impact on you. Now, just a couple of things. The Boston family, if many of you don't know the Boston family, the Boston family are one of our founding pioneers of this city. They had a tragedy on this lot. That's the first thing that concerned me, is these young people that lost their life, that remember like it was yesterday, and one of the things I looked for in the plans was some type of memorial to them and the family, which I see is going to be very nice. But, you know, I don't think any one of us can promise you you'll not have any bad thing happen there, but I can tell you, I had this 10 times worse, and what we have out there, just please write down 419, and you will see what was built on a beautiful lot where there was nothing. We loved it. It was so well, but it's fine, and we're having no issues with it at all. So, if that gives you some more comfort. And then just to wrap up, a couple more things, 30 more trees, you're going to have it very wooded, you know, it's kind of set back, it's got a nice buffer way. Is it perfect? I know you'd like to keep the land out. I wish I still had my five acres of trees and, and a bird sanctuary and all this stuff, but unfortunately, people do have their rights to build their property, and the family that's selling it, I can assure you that this Boston family has nothing but the best interest of this community, and they're not going nowhere. And if they see something happen bad there, they will be at that podium, and they will be on us to make it right. So, I know it's not perfect, but I hope tonight when you go to sleep, you'll, you'll think about another community in your own city had this 10 times worse, and now that it's there, it's fine. It's, it's okay. And we will make sure that you don't have this riffraff. Boat chiefs are going to watch this like hawks. Police department will be out there, so if it does get approved, you know, please don't, don't be that upset. We will make sure that we watch over you and then take care of you and make it the best that it can be. But I wouldn't want you to have a tattoo shop or a pawn, a pawn shop store or something bad like that out in front of your community, so this is the best we can, we can get you, and it, and it will look nice. Mayor, that's all I have.
Auto shop.
Yeah, auto shop or, or a gas station. And I did check, you know, I was going to ask about gas station, but I talked about staff today. It'd be very difficult for a gas station under our current code, because they always want a convenience store that could be allowed to do pumps, but that, that's probably very unlikely, and that, that would bother me. That was before us tonight. That'd be an absolute no, you know? So, turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman. Deputy Mayor Burton?
Thanks. I just want to have a few clarifications and maybe some comments afterwards.
That's it?
First one is for Mr. Groot, or I can go to, I can go to Brian. What I wanted to do is ask maybe if Brian can come up and talk about concurrency and the relationship of level of service versus the impact this, this building will have on our roads and infrastructure. Are you prepared to do that, Brian?
Let me just go over to his notes. Mr. Cobb keeps copious notes over there.
I guess probably coming up, we used to talk about the impact of a new business on the ability of the infrastructure to support the impacts, the additional traffic and, and things like that, and what was going to be done, or whether, whether the infrastructure actually could accommodate a new facility. Do we actually even do that anymore?
Yes.
We do? Okay. And in this case, is there, is there any new impacts or any impacts that are not able to be met?
Actually, the, the analysis that was conducted demonstrated that there is sufficient capacity to serve the site, both on the roadway as well as at the intersection.
Okay.
So, there's sufficient capacity to serve, serve it from a transportation perspective. Now, one thing I will caution is, is that the project hasn't completed its review. We're still in the process of reviewing it.
Okay.
So, but I can tell you what the study, the study says, that there is sufficient capacity to serve the site.
Okay. And the, the review will go to PZA, I assume?
Uh, no, sir. This review's right now, as it's, as it is being right now, it's completely within the staff's authority.
Okay. All right. Will we get a, a report at some point?
Well, one of the things that's in your pre-development order is, it's sort of like a report card that asks, once, as part of your pre-development order, we'll bring back and let you know that the conditions of the pre-development order have been met. And then once the city council receives that report that the conditions have been met, then we'll be able to issue the site development order.
Okay. All right. And I don't know if either you or Mr. Groot can answer my next question. It has to do with the, the binding of, of the agreement, and, you know, I'm not a realtor in, in the real estate, but I'd like to see this agreement take the effect of restrictive covenants. Is that what will take place here, Mr. Groot?
I need to defer to him.
Neither the city manager or I have seen the agreement, so it sounds like it's going to be a private matter between the Biltmore Homeowners Association and the property owner.
Similar to related into the development orders.
And Mr. Groot, that would be similar to the Riverside agreement with Mr. Boxey, I think.
That's exactly right.
Okay. And what, what effect does that have as far, as far as being bonded? I've heard the mayor say it runs perpetually. How does that, what mechanism enforces that?
Well, my guess is Mr. Spain's going to make sure it runs with the land and, and protects the interest of his clients.
Okay. Mr. Spain, do you have anything to add to that to help Deputy Mayor? If you don't mind. Thank you, Brian.
Deputy Mayor, as the agreement's written, it's binding on the successors and the signs and joint ventures of both parties. So, it's binding on the developer if he sells the property.
Okay. So, that gets recorded, I assume, somewhere in the property...
That's in the settlement agreement itself. Obviously, the authorities want to do, in theory, I suppose they could record a settlement agreement, but the deed restriction, the separate paragraph about the prohibited uses, that would be the developer actually recording that deed restriction.
That's right.
Which has a, runs to the benefit of the HOA and its members, and would be enforceable by the HOA and its members, and would not be able to be amended without the HOA's consent.
Yeah, and just to help Deputy Mayor, Mr. Spain, we did the same thing out at Riverside. It runs with the land. It was filed with the clerk of the court in Seminole County, so if anybody tried to develop, Dollar General didn't want to be there, someone will try to develop a, you know, a tattoo shop or some other bad business, they would see it, and it would not be allowed.
Sure.
So, it just has to be recorded at the clerk of the court.
Yeah.
As part of the development agreement.
And the deed restriction definitely will, and, and another approach sometimes we do, and folks don't want to disclose all the terms of a settlement agreement, they can sometimes record just a one-page document that essentially is a notice of restrictions per settlement agreement, and that, that puts folks on notice to go ask where is that settlement agreement?
Okay. So, you're going to ensure that that, that gets done?
Yeah, the, the deed restriction will definitely be recorded.
Okay.
Assuming the final site development order is issued, because that's the trigger.
That's the trigger. Okay. Okay, thank you. I guess that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, to say that, you know, this is a, this is not an easy decision to make, but we, we are up here to, to represent the people and their wishes and desires, but we're, we're also charged to protect property owners, their desires to do what they want with their property. And as we've seen, Councilman Henkin spoke of his situation. I live in Twin Rivers, and we went through the same process when Seminole State came in. No one knew what that would entail. It was a large piece of property that was basically in its natural state. We had no idea how that was going to turn out, and it, it really hasn't had an impact on us either, other than maybe some traffic, which we'll, we deal with anyway. So, I, I think this is one of these things where the citizens are commended for being involved. That's what the process is for. I will tell you, we've heard you, I don't know how many hundreds of emails I've gotten, but we've gotten them all. We understand what your concerns are. I will tell you, your HOA represented you viciously, I think. They were tenacious in, in what their issues were, and they were tenacious in their negotiations. I believe the developer will, will back me up on that. So, I think, although this is a compromise, I think it's, it's a very good compromise, and it also should use some protections that'll, that'll weigh in many years from now that you might not otherwise have, so, you know, not an easy thing to do, but I think this is the best we can get under the circumstances.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody from my right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first thank the Biltmore Homeowners Association for all their hard work and diligence and commitment to keeping their neighborhood what they want it to be. I also want to thank RKM, because I think that you have really reached far and above with your commitment to help ease the pain of what the residents are feeling, and, and the concessions that you gave into are incredible, because that does, I can tell you that that doesn't always happen. Lots of times, someone comes in to develop, and they develop what they want, and they don't work with their surrounding neighborhoods, so they're stuck with what they want. So, I think on both sides, you're, you're very passionate. So I think on both sides, you're, you're very passionate, cared very much about what you wanna do. Um, I did wanna address one issue I don't think has been addressed, and Chief Chadno, would you mind? Chief, when, when we started meeting and talking about the Dollar General coming in, I called you or emailed you, and I don't remember, it's been a while, so I hope you remember, and I asked you about the crime around these type of, of stores. And you responded to me with, with what you knew was happening in our city and their surrounding cities with that. Can you elaborate a little bit? Do you remember?
Yes, I do, Councilwoman. Uh, as far as crime in our, in our city with the resident, with a, a commercial property that is up against a residential property, we have not had a, we have not had a crime issue where that, that I can recollect, that the property, the commercial property was used as a jumping off point for a crime in the residential area.
And I remember a while ago when Racetrack was coming in, there was some, some concern about crime around the, um, those type of convenience stores and gas stations, 'cause they're open all night. So I asked the chief to, to look into that and bring up some statistics on it. Do you remember that, too?
Yes, I do. Uh, for the convenience stores we have open twenty-four hours, uh, we do have, once in a while, an incident, but we, we have not had, and if I, I'm not gonna wood here, uh, any of those, uh, or anything like that at the convenience stores in our, in our city.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to bring that up, because, uh, it was mentioned that it causes a lot of crime in that area, and, of course, you know, public safety is one of our number-one priority here in the city, and, uh, so I just wanted to clarify that, that we didn't overlook that little bit of information. Um, this has been very painful, I have to tell you, with all the meetings and, and emails and letters, and most of them were very nice, very respectful, very nice letters, some not so much. Um, but what I was hearing tonight, which I was glad to hear, that the attorneys have agreed on, on, on those issues and got it out. But then, on the other side, what I'm hearing is the residents still are not happy with this. And you're right, we do represent the, the residents, and we wanna hear you. I want you to know that we hear you, we take it very serious. Um, and we also hear, you know, what we, we're trying to make Oviedo best that it can be. We're trying to support businesses to come into Oviedo, because in the long run, that helps diversify our tax base, which takes the burden off homeowners to pay those taxes. Um, and, uh, it is very interesting and very important to remember that we cannot dictate, government cannot dictate, and we don't wanna change that. We cannot dictate to property owners who they can sell their property to. We can only regulate, um, uh, certain types of businesses that are unwanted, um, whether or not they're zoning, we follow our rules, our guidelines, what's in our master plan. But we can't dictate to them to say, "Well, you know, you, you can sell it, but you can't sell it to this person or that person." So it's, it's a real difficult situation, um, but I, I do hear you, I, I understand how you feel, I, I go by it, and I look, I've gone down there and walked up and down that street, and I looked at the sidewalk that's on the opposite side, which really needs to be cleared away, 'cause I don't think you can even walk through there. And my feeling was, uh, you know, it just didn't look as if it was going to fit into that spot. So I, I took everything you had to say, I took everything they had to say, and I know it's a very difficult situation, and we don't take this lightly. We don't make a decision just, you know, without looking into it, doing research and listening to what you have to say. And, uh, we have some decisions to make, and that's it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I do wanna, uh, say that you were very well represented by Michelle. She was vigorous in the way she emailed, um, and stood up for, uh, a lot of the things you brought up tonight. She brought orders up for many, many months in emails and calls, and I, I think we've met twice, all told. But very many emails, trying to make sure that this was done, if it's gonna be done, in the right way, and she was really, it wouldn't be done at very first. Um, you know, to, to the developers' credit, they bought the property, although seven thousand square feet, we keep talking about seven thousand square feet fit on the property, it's on the front property. If you add the, what the back property adds in, um, it would easily suffice and take care of nine thousand square feet of retail there. Um, they originally didn't have the property. They listened to your concerns from Michelle, I said, she was vigorous. They bought the property behind it to make it connected, to, to have it so that they could use it more effectively, uh, rather than try to kinda squeeze it. Um, it gets used more effectively, to be able to offer you ten parking spots, because that was one of the big concerns, was parking outside had become an issue that people park outside all the time currently. It would be nice to have dedicated parking spots for the homeowners in Biltmore. She really fought viciously to try to, to start listening to your concerns and try to answer them. Um, I'm sure the same answer you can ask, but maybe Brian can come up, but, uh, study for, for the, um, traffic study, that's current design, that doesn't include the cut for 426, correct?
The preliminary plan that is provided in the study does not include an access on State Route 426.
So even, you know, that's gonna add, it, it meets the criteria currently, but that 426 cut right in and out is gonna make, we all know, will make another further huge difference. But it's a, I always say it's a, an egg and a chicken thing. They can't do that, really do that until they get to this point, they have to have this before they can really start proposing getting that 426 cut moving along. Um, so, that's gonna even further make the traffic problem much easier and much lighter along Chippendale. I'd like to remember, uh, thank you, Brian, sorry. Uh, when the development was being created, uh, the first, uh, the, when they were making Chippendale and such, I, I believe the developer was told, "It's not a private road, you're not creating a private road," and he knew that going in and didn't want to make it and incur the costs and things of a private road. Um, it is a public road. Um, so he knew that when he was putting it in, that that would become a public road, and created it that way. Um, I also like the, the developer has proposed, again, listening to Michelle and the concerns of yours, and I'll give the mayor some credit, uh, he looked up probably a lot of adult generals it seemed, and came forth and found red dimes, uh, adult generals that looked nicer than ones that were even being proposed. Um, can I see somebody up on the screen? Please? Yeah, can we put Exhibit E up there? Do you have the, uh? Yeah, if you just load the agenda, we can leave it up for a minute. And just show people our?
Exhibit D.
It's Exhibit E. It's Exhibit E. Uh, you know, this is?
Thank you, Linda.
I believe it was the one that they proposed, and the mayor found one that was much even nicer, and said, "We want this one, this is the nicest one."
As a minimum.
As a minimum. And this is the minimum. This far, in some ways, will exceed our current standards, um, but there are some parts of it that may have to go even further, based on our standards. Can't you just bring it up on the? Can't you just bring the agenda up? You don't have the agenda on there?
All right, take your time, we'll get it up there.
But yeah, if you can just get it up at some time, that's all. Um, but I, Michelle has been diligent for, I, I gotta say, six, eight, nine, I know they've been about for months, but probably at least nine months, um, fighting for you guys to get the things that are necessary to keep it moving along and to make it a better project. Um, I, I've told them, the developer and I told Michelle this, I've seen developments, I've seen others, I've, they've offered a lot in terms of concessions and giving back. Uh, I've never seen this much really being given back, as, uh, the councilwoman said, uh, they usually stop and say, "No, we're gonna build this, that's the way it is." And, again, in perpetuity, it's also locked in that the other types of stores that we currently would allow, pawn shops, et cetera, no matter what, Dollar General has to leave for whatever reason, those are now not allowed, and not moving with the land. So it also gives you further protection in case something that's allowed right now, a seven thousand foot square, a seven thousand square foot pawn shop could go there right now, or others. No disrespect to those pawn shop owners, but we don't want one there either. Um, but it gives you, uh, protection ongoing, so.
Councilman Schenk, just to add on to Councilman Schick, as I, as I said, I want you just to all remember, had this building been a little bit less, if it would've been seven thousand square feet, it wouldn't even have came to us, it would've just been, been, been put out. So I think it's so important to remember, however this turns out, that, um, the developer is giving so much more to make this property a little bit nicer than what the normal thing was, but we're really talking about two thousand square feet, we wouldn't even be here, and then there could be some really bad business that's out of our hands, so, um, let's hope that, uh, we're trying to get you the picture, folks, so you can get an idea.
What would be a picture?
So you can get an idea of what it, what the building, as it stands now, is supposed to look like.
I had the agenda on USB drive.
Oh, okay.
Anything else, Captain?
No.
Sorry.
We'll give the clerks just a couple of minutes to catch up to us, and they will get the rendering up. Um, I'd just like to add a couple of quick items while we're waiting for them, you know, so everybody understands, issues like these come up all over the city. And in all of my years that I've sat up here, there are many things that are built out at the corner of, everybody familiar with Chapman and Alfaire? Well, that's rattling. You know how many things I've had to vote for that I didn't like along Alfaire and Chapman over the years because of property rights? How many things my neighbors have said to me, "What's going on?" And, I mean, just as a, just a little list here. We got a Mystic gas station that's closed, and it's been closed forever. It used to be the Texco, which was one of the original gas stations in the city of Oviedo. Since I've done, yeah, I've voted for Seven-Eleven, Racetrack, townhomes behind a half-empty shopping center, which I also had to vote for, because the property owner had property rights. Um, two empty commercial lots that are out on the corner of Chapman and 434 right now, they took down all the pine trees, they built two flat flats. I, I've been looking at that every day. Uh, workforce housing, everybody ever see that? It's right across from where I live, folks. Uh, I had to vote for it up on the stairs. Goodwill, anybody seen the Goodwill? Nice building, I gotta tell you, what a great addition. Everybody was so fearful of it. Uh, two half-first shopping plazas, that's elementary, right across the street from where I live, and that, that does sound like a lot of fun until you're trying to get out of your house at between eight o'clock and eight fifteen in the morning, and you're trapped, because there is no other way out of our home other than Chapman, similar to what you have. Uh, 434, wading up to six lanes, the aisle is here, we had to vote for that. Chapman, wading up to four lanes, the aisle is here, we had to vote for that. So these types of issues happen throughout the city. And, uh, you know, it's not just over by your homes, it's over by our homes as well. And we get trapped in between that, or we get put into that box, as we were saying earlier, of denying something and getting sued. Workforce housing, we denied it, we got sued, we got drug into federal court. I spent, I don't know how many days with our city attorney, being deposed over this project. I can't tell you how many tax dollars we spent on that project, denying it, and what's built down there right now, workforce housing. Now, in the end, we were able to make a settlement, just like your HOA made this evening, where your tax dollars were replenished from that lawsuit as part of the settlement. But, uh, a lot of times, we don't. The gas station, Councilman Hankin was talking about, we denied it, we were sued, we spent about forty grand of, on Mr. Groot and his fine legal team in circuit court, and we lost. That's when his HOA stepped up. So, you know, I know these things are difficult, uh, oh, there's the rendering. Yeah, it's a little...
Hard to see. That's the minimum.
Right, and that's the minimum. Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Skelton, does anybody wanna come and describe this to the residents? I was gonna pick Mr. Skelton, Mr. Lloyd, but that's okay. You stood up.
My name's Bill Lloyd, I'm with RKM Development. Give my address, 147 Second Avenue South, St. Petersburg, Florida. This is a one-of-a-kind, would-be a one-of-a-kind Dollar General. It has a, a metal seam roof and a hardy board siding. The colors are pretty self-evident, there'll be a, a brick band that will run the perimeter of the building. Um, there's some, uh, faux windows and shutters along the side to give it a little bit of depth. Do you have any other questions? I, I did bring up a board that shows the material.
Can you show it?
The ripper was not rattling.
Can you show the resident?
And again, Mr. Lloyd, that is the minimum standard, this drawing, only because it hasn't been reviewed by staff yet, so there could be a few more things added to it as we go. Now, you have lighting on it, too, like the barn lighting I saw, and...
Yes.
Shades and all different sorts. Thank you. Anybody like anything else? Councilman Britton, anybody? Up and down? Mr. Boxley or Mr. Spain, do you have anything to add before we take the vote?
Mr. Mayor?
We did bring a colored landscape plan.
I'll do. Now, you're saving some of those bigger trees, I remember having that discussion.
Yes, the, uh, the reason the access point on Chippendale is close proximity to the gate was to save the grandos.
You're saving both of them? Not the one, there's one like in the center, and then there's two along the edge.
I believe we're saving three.
So three of those big, large trees that are still there will still be there.
That's correct.
Could you hold that up? Let everybody see. I think they're off to your left. Thank you. Disagreed, anything?
Well, you have a motion to approve the resolution, that, and we were...
We have some amendments.
Okay.
I wasn't calling the question.
That's what I wanted to ask them.
I'll make the amendments.
I was just asking if there was any...
No, you were just gonna summarize so far what you, you think you'd, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Groot, I appreciate you keeping me on track. Sometimes you do have many things on your mind as you're doing this, and you lose track of the little things. Um, all right, the motion is on the table. Now, this motion, agree, we're going to add a few items. Councilman Schenk?
Uh, dark, that they would follow Dark Knight Sky standards?
Actually, I think it was a different name, Dark Wood.
I think it's just called Dark Sky. Yeah, Dark Sky standards, yeah.
Dark Sky standards for the lighting. They're gonna discuss and do a study on the left-hand turn lane off of Chippendale, and a left-hand turn signal, obviously, we'd go with that. Uh, the agreement with Biltmore is to be included over to the city, so that we can make sure we're not missing anything that is within our purview for, uh, regulation. I'm sorry, Councilman.
I was just gonna say in the minimum standards, you just wanna throw that in?
I was just going to say in the minimum standards, you just want to throw that in?
And, right, the rendering that's given to us is the minimum standards, I believe that's part of the resolution that's in front of us. The delivery schedule is 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but that's part of the pocket agreement that will come over to us. Are there any other amendments to the motion? Motion agree? Seconder agrees?
Seconder agrees. Shall it?
Mr. Groot, anything else, Mr. Cobb, did we miss anything on the amendments?
Can I sort of summarize what we think you did for the, on the pre-development order?
No.
Okay. In Part C, Paragraph 1A, there'd be an addition, "The property owner shall accomplish a left-hand turn, mine and traffic signalization analysis from Chippendale Terrace onto State Road 426 westbound."
He's going to do a study.
Yes, sir.
Unless you want to get up and commit to it right now without knowing anything, that's fine.
Well, we said it now, okay, we'll change the analysis.
Analysis, okay, analysis is fine, I'm sorry.
Analysis, okay, okay. And then, in B, "The architectural plan for the development shall, comma, at a minimum, comma, be as generally depicted, et cetera." That would be the rendering.
Okay.
And then, add an E, "The site plan shall include a requirement for dark skylighting, period."
Okay.
Did we miss anything?
What?
Dark sky, that's very good, dark skylighting standards.
The agreement with Biltmore is going to be included, there's nothing in there that's not regulated by us?
Quite frankly, that's difficult for us to do because none of us have seen it.
Okay.
So what, but that being said, is it just going to be provided to staff, staff can look at it and see what can be incorporated from a total perspective?
That's fine.
One more important point, Mr. Groot, the deed restrictions, which are very important to, they're going to limit any possibility, Dollar General, I want to be there, said all these other things, they will be filed with the clerk of the court.
That's, Mr. Spain and...
Well, I would, you know, I know what I did to, for my own area out there, we had a problem 10 times as large as this, you know, I would like to see that be recorded so if anybody tries to put in some inappropriate business that it's in the clerk's office, that somebody can find me, is that...
What I was just saying said was that he's going to make sure that the language is such that the covenant's touching concern the land, therefore run with the land, and will be recorded upon the site plan approval being filed without appeal. So once they're recorded, they will run with the land, they will be binding, they will...
Perpetual?
Yes, sir.
That's important.
Okay.
Then, Mr. Groot, one last thing and I'll ask the motioner and the seconder, the parking spots that are in the back are going to be deeded to the city, but it's always been our intention to enter into some sort of a descriptive easement of some sort with Biltmore. Do you want that as part of the pre-development order or is that just something we...
I don't think you need to, and I think that once the parking spaces are of the cities, are part of the cities right away, the city can permit it or do whatever else the city finds to be in the public interest.
Okay. So it'll be a commitment from the council that at the appropriate time, we would take that action to turn them over to Biltmore and possibly some of that right-of-way also leading to that lot in the back, that way they control that back parcel, the back driveway to the lot that they're evidently being given as part of the agreement that their HOA signed.
That can be implemented in the future and make...
You'll talk to Spain about that as a time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Anything else? Hearing on call, the board on favor of the motion amended on the floor, signify by saying aye. Aye. First motion carries. Next item. Next item is item number 19, it is resolution number 2587-12, it's establishing a special magistrate code enforcement process and sunsetting on code enforcement board. We're going to re-exit and then we'll continue on. Mr. Skelton, could you take that rendering out into the hallway so the folks can take a peek at? If they'd like to.
Two more items.
All right, Ms. Brazil.
Thank you, resolution 2587-12 establishes a special magistrate process, sunsets the current code enforcement board process, and ratifies and affirms the city's contract with a special magistrate attorney Melanie Chase. At the June 11th council workshop, staff provided information relative to the court processes for code enforcement and the city's codes and ordinances. Those processes were multiple in nature, fragmented, in some cases not being utilized. Staff proposed moving to a single special magistrate process to hear all matters pertaining to violations of city codes and ordinances, as well as to hear cases for new administrative citation processes. City council directed staff to move forward with the proposed process and the resolution before you does that.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, it was pleasure of council on resolution number 2587-12.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion with Doc Resolution 2587-12.
Second. Yeah, motion second, is there any discussion?
No, just that I think this is going to be a much more smoother, cleaner process for code enforcement, it's going to make life for the staff, the residents, a lot easier. I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
Councilman Schenk, anything? I'd say thanks to staff and Sean for putting this together, appreciate it. Councilwoman? Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to request that we somehow send a note of appreciation to the members of the code enforcement committee.
Actually, we have them coming down.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And I think Sean, well, Sean's not here this evening, but I know they're working on something for them. Anything else? Well, I do happen to agree that this is going to make it a much cleaner, easier system for not only staff to manage, but, you know, much easier on the people who even used to serve on the code enforcement board. When you're trying to enforce rules, regulations and codes against your own folks who live in the city, neighbors that you may know, it sometimes gets difficult in the process. This will, I don't want to call it make it clinical, but it will certainly make it more black and white when it comes to enforcing the codes that are in the city. It's going to give the staff much more flexibility in how they enforce the codes in the city and in the end, there will actually be a cost savings to the city, so, you know, this is going to be a good thing all the way around, I believe. So that being said, the motion I'm favoring is the Doc Resolution 2587-12, you're in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. First motion carries. Moving on, it's Seminole County Education Referendum. Ms. Brazil, brief intervention.
Thank you, at your September 17th meeting, there was consensus for council to have a discussion item on the Seminole County Education Referendum. The information packet that was provided to you that night provided a sample resolution supporting the education referendum and also a sample letter of support. And both of those items have been included tonight for your discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. I'll be frank, I'm the one who brought this up, asked for consensus to put on the agenda. I appreciate everybody indulging me in retrospect. I think that the only thing that we probably, my opinion should be doing is just encouraging people to be informed on both sides of the issue and going out and voting on it. Not sure that, after reading what was attached and what they gave us, not sure that's exactly a position that elected body should be taking, but that's just my opinion, since I brought it up, I thought I'd throw it out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I think you hit it right on. We had Coach Van Gundy, we had Ms. Irwin here, and what do I always tell you guys for seven years, the voters never get it wrong, they always get it right, and I think they've educated the public on what the issue is at the school system, and when the voters go to the polls this November, they're all racist, they will get it right like they always do, and I always put my trust when the masses go out, they will get it, but I think both sides of the issue give their passion plea in why it should be passed or not passed, so, you know, a couple of weeks, we'll know, we'll know lots of stuff in a couple of weeks, and I'm comfortable that when it's all done, voters will get it right.
Great, thank you. Anything else from anybody?
Literally, I was writing the words you were saying, encourage people to educate themselves on the issues and had to stop because you just started saying.
I'm not even sure we have to...
Do we even have to moralize it? I don't think we need to moralize or anything.
Does anybody think we need to moralize it? Councilman, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. You don't think we need to moralize or...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I agree wholeheartedly, I think it's better to put it out there and let the voters vote on it, but...
We know you do.
We don't need to.
So we'll let both groups know, but we support them both and good luck. So no further action needed by staff? No further action needed by staff. Anybody calls and asks on the council supports them both.
I don't know if we support a vote, but I trust that the voters will get it right on election day, and they will, there's no doubt.
All right. All right, so that being said, we'll have the city managers report.
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, nice.
I won it, I have something.
How is chicken judging?
Fix. My daughter won the race.
You weren't in one of the races?
She was in the races. I was judging a different contest, it was very educational, we had a lot of fun, and my old 10-year-old ran away with two first places, so we had a good time.
All right, I'm glad to hear that. Councilmember Schenk, you are.
I stopped by early at a basketball game right before that, so I beat their opening chickens, but set on everybody, looked like a lot of fun getting ready to be had over there by the Kiwanis Club, so they do a great job. We've got an incubator, an Altamont, coming up this week, I think a couple of us are going to see that.
What day is it?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
It's Wednesday morning?
Yeah.
I won't be able to make that.
And then the Chamber Luncheon is coming up this week, we've spent a lot of times past two weeks at football games, both at Oviedo, the Fish Fryer, which was a lot of fun, my son came with me and he was just laughing, seeing pictures of the 1962, you know, team up there and then the people there who were on the team, he got very excited at that and really enjoyed that, and then the Hagerty, the Hagerty-Oviedo game was a good deal of fun. I know it's your first Hagerty Cup game, so quite a fun thing. The other thing I was having a rethink here, I was wondering if we could put up a link to the rethink website on our website, the presentation that we got today, put a link to there so that people can find the information out, if that's one thing we can do. I know we're working towards multiple website and sire software, what's our update on sire software? Well, because we just bumped up a little bit more, so seeing the update, and again, I'm always going to proceed that with, I know we want to do it the right way, so please don't rush it, we want to get it right, but just looking for an update, I know, I know there was little setbacks on their part, so.
There were, I apologize, there haven't been many, but contractor issues, but today we completed the audio and visual part two, so upstairs, if you take a tour up there, all of that is new and better wiring, better equipment, which should improve our sound to our citizens on the web as well as being able to hear it here. And then the sire, we're running the test tonight as we speak, so tonight's a test run, and we hope we'll be doing it the next meeting, but it may be the following, is that correct, Barbara?
She'll be delighted when they know this is staged. So I said, I knew there were some issues on their part, right, and that's why I was looking for, you know, just an update, but I know they were, there's delays on their part.
The clerks, the office and IT deserve a tremendous amount of thanks for their hard work on this, but we will have it due as soon as we can, thank you for asking.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Councilmember Hampton?
Councilwoman Dre, no, I'm good.
There you go. Councilwoman, you're up.
He's done.
He's done?
That was it, end of his report.
All right, well, some of us attended the Oviedo High School 50th anniversary of their football team the other last weekend or something like that, it was great.
20th.
Can you believe it, it was only back on the September 20th already.
Yeah, yeah, but it was great to see all those football players that are now up in age but still very proud of themselves, it was a great event. Also attended a Helpful Hands event, it was a fundraiser for a local nonprofit organization, very successful. The Hagerty-Oviedo game was great, I did have to leave a little bit early because I just wasn't feeling very well, so I went home. And I agree with Councilman Schenk on that rethink, to put that up on our website, I think that's a great idea. And I know it was a very difficult decision tonight with Biltmore and Dollar General, there's a lot of people who are going to be upset and I can understand how they feel, but it was difficult, and that's the end of my report.
And I think in a year from now, if you ask them, they'll be fine, because I know 800 homes out where I am love what they got in the end, and it tends to, you know, change is tough, but they'll be all right.
It is.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a few things, I'll be attending a Legis Cities meeting for the Transportation and Intergovernment Relations Committee on the 12th, which also coincides with Hagerty's high school's homecoming parade, I think we're all planning that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I wanted to get a clarification, the next meeting, are we going to meet two weeks from today or are we going to push that out to the...
22nd.
22nd, okay.
We're going to, the 15th is the ribbon cutting for the Paul Mitchell sign.
Okay, all right. And just in closing, I wanted to make a comment on the Hagerty-Oviedo football game, you know, that's turning into quite the rivalry, but I've got to tell you, I have never been to a rivalry game where the, both the players and the kids in the stands were so well behaved. I don't think I saw even anyone spitting gun on the ground, I was really impressed with that, and that's a real tribute to both principals of those high schools, those kids came, they cheered hard, the kids on the field played hard, and I think they're all still friends. Go figure.
Congratulations to Oviedo.
First time anybody did back-to-back on the cup.
And the dance teams danced together.
That's right. So that was really nice to see, and I actually walked through the marsh pit down there by the concession stand, and everyone was really well behaved, I mean, I was really, really pleased to see that.
You know what was cool about that game too? To see Hagerty's own Jeff Driscoll, who's a starting quarterback for the Gators at 4-0, we came back to his alma mater for the big game, which he had the first upset when the first year we did it, that Hagerty was not supposed to win, and he pulled that upset, that was a great game, but it was nice to see him, you know, local kid doing, doing good, come back to his alma mater and stand there and cheer on these young kids, so that was good, good to see Mr. Driscoll out there.
Anything else, Deputy Mayor? That's it, thanks. All right, real quick, February the 20th, the Iron Heart Quell, that's the annual event of Central Florida Regional, I know some of us are attending, it was a lot of fun last year, it should be well-attended this year. Next Wednesday, the 10th, I'm doing the manager's presentation for PBAS, so everybody who'd like to join me at 7:30 in the morning, the city manager, I mean, it's more than welcome. The pancake breakfast, I talked about that earlier this past Saturday, was just well-attended, it was, it's great what Tim and Mary do over there at TJ's for those types of fundraisers in the community. Hagerty Homecoming is February the 12th at 1:00, and do you have anything on Oviedo Homecoming, they're usually the same time.
Thursday's?
Two weeks after Hagerty.
People you all, Jeff, send out emails and all.
All right, so that would make it the 20th, 25th.
Thursday, the 25th?
Yeah, Thursday's is usually on a Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, okay.
46.
Oh, Friday, they're going to do it on Friday then?
Yeah, it's either the 25th or 26th, although Jeff, you send you can get these...
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. And that is the end of my report, does anybody have anything else? Mr. Groot, do you have anything this evening?
Just real...
Sorry, I skipped over.
No, that's okay, you typically ask about the stormwater litigation, and I checked this afternoon, not, no action in the... this afternoon, not, no action in the Supreme Court on the Key West case, and no action in the Fifth District Court on the Marion County case, so they're still just sitting there right now.
Well, thank you for updating us on it, and we'll just keep our eyes on it. Future meeting dates, Monday, as Councilman Group mentioned, Monday, October 22nd, we are pushing the meeting out one week, 5:30 p.m. is our CRA Governing Board meeting, the 22nd at 6:30 p.m. is our regular session, November 5th, 6:30 p.m., and November 19th, 6:30 p.m. are also regular sessions. With that being said, the meeting is adjourned, it is approximately quarter to nine.